This regular meeting of July 18th, 2022 of Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call please.
Bradley.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Prohaska.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Nancy.
Here.
Whitman.
Here.
Welcome, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on June 13th as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 13th as submitted. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion also carries. All right, so we're to Board Salutes on the agenda, and I believe we have one salute tonight from Ms. Bradley.
I'm delighted on behalf of the Board to give a big Board salute to the Telegraph Herald for its accomplishment of being named the Iowa Newspaper of the Year. It's wonderful when right things happen and when good and good work is recognized. So, we're just delighted to say thanks to the Telegraph Herald and congratulations. Our community benefits from the strong journalism of the Telegraph Herald, and it's truly a hometown leader that serves the tri-states with professionalism and with integrity. So, the Board gives a strong congratulations to the Telegraph Herald staff, all departments, who make not only their print newspaper but their online news, a reliable and accurate source of news, and a source of pride for our whole community. Bravo to the Telegraph Herald.
Thank you. Any others tonight? All right. Thank you again. Oh, go ahead.
I move the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. If you'd like to address the Board of Education tonight, you can do so at this time. We'd ask that you state your name, your connection to the district, and limit your remarks to three minutes using our handy timer.
Good evening. Chuck Eisenhardt, 1665 Kaufman Avenue. Welcome to Amy to the warm seat.
Thank you.
This is your first meeting. I don't approach you as a state representative, which you know I am, although I am proud to have the Dubuque Soccer Complex in my district. I approach you with a number of hats and former hats. The one I'll mention tonight is a co-founder of the Dubuque Soccer Alliance and one of its original board members until last year. Most of this information was covered in a letter I emailed you all today, so I'll just excerpt tonight. I don't serve on the Alliance Board, so I don't speak for the group. You need to make that clear. But I am here to discourage the school board from engaging in a process intended to lead or could lead to the Dubuque Soccer Complex being used for any other purpose, especially a purpose that does not involve youth recreation, youth education, and youth socialization. I originally was involved in the Alliance as Executive Director of the Dubuque Area Labor Management Council. The Labor Management Council has supported every public referendum the school board has brought to voters since the council was founded in the late 1980s. Members of the council provided a sizable portion of the estimated $2 million of in-kind and cash investments made by businesses, community organizations, city of Dubuque, state of Iowa, and soccer families themselves to turn a hilly cornfield into the marquee attraction it became and remains today. One of the Labor Management Council's associate members, IIW engineers, now Origin Design, designed the facility at no cost. Our member John Deere Dubuque Works contributed the earth-moving equipment. Retirees from our member operating engineers, Local 234, donated free labor and expertise to operate the equipment. The city of Dubuque extended sewer and water to the site. I understand Bill Jantsch will be mentioning some of the other contributions. But highlighting the community's investments in the physical aspects of the facility does little to quantify the health, education, and social benefits accruing to thousands of youth and adults alike over the past 30 years, especially through the pandemic, and not just with soccer but also cross-country and other activities. I personally don't remember being conscious of the fact that the world is inhabited by people of so many colors and ethnicities until I played soccer. And I now know people and have friends from most countries and every continent except maybe Antarctica, although I sometimes dress like a penguin. And I'm sure that's true of many of the youth that have played there over the last 30 years. It would not be fair to discount these intangible values, much less the value of the community's dollar investment and sweat equity in this land, either in determining its future or in setting its price, notwithstanding any appraisal based on its hypothetical development for high-end housing. Good on -- do you want me to stop?
That's your time.
I encourage you to sit down and deal in good faith with the Dubuque Soccer Alliance and suspend your process tonight until that's completed.
Thank you, Mr. Eisenhardt.
Good evening. My Nancy. I see a lot of familiar faces up here. My name is Bill Jantsch, and I was -- I'm retired from Dubuque Community Schools in 1997 after 28 years as a teacher, coach, and athletic director. And I definitely support the continuance of the soccer complex as a soccer facility. And I'd like to just give you some steps in history how that beautiful place for young people to come out there happened. It just didn't happen without a lot of sweat, blood, and tears by soccer parents and soccer enthusiasts. Soccer came to Dubuque in 1985. In 1987, the parents came to the Athletic Council to ask to have club soccer adopted by the school district. The Athletic Council voted to not do anything for two years because of financial constraints, lack of coaches, and no facilities. Dennis Albright and Tim O'Brien came in 1998 with a $16,000 pledge to pilot a two-year program. The school board accepted that the next year, and as district athletic director, I was instructed to find a place to play the games. Having no facilities, we went to Emey's Bible College and Clark College. Pizza sales provided funds for uniforms and equipments, and the parents' money funded coaches' salaries and transportation. As time went on, the next three, four years, participation of the AYSO in schools grew immensely, and practice and field sites for games became very critical. At that time, the Dubuque Community School System and the city of Dubuque did not have funding to develop any new fields, so volunteer soccer people came forward and said, "If we can find the land, we'll raise the money." And did the community respond. In 1993, the Dubuque Soccer Alliance was founded with the first charter meeting organized by Judge Ellen Pearson. He set up an organizational board to supervise that and had all the soccer organization as members of it. At that time, a 10-year lease was approved by the school district for construction of soccer fields and across-country course. So, there was a nice partnership between the Dubuque Soccer Alliance, Dubuque Community School District, and the city to complete the project. So, a lot of money was raised, I think of up to $500,000, $600,000, I'm not sure, but six fields were named out there after some of these banks and different groups that gave up to $50,000 apiece. Chuck already mentioned Mo Oil Company and John Deere brought crawlers all the way from Davenport. And so, this complex has provided a tremendous service to the community, and I think that they helped out the school district. The school district played their games out there until Amy got that turf with the penny fund. But I hope you'll take that into consideration. I think you all, I compliment the Board on what they've done to maintain the quality of curricular activities in this district. I just don't mean sports. I mean band, drama, and all the other extracurricular activities that give people a place to learn outside the classroom.
Thank you.
Been a parent, now grandparent in the school district. I live on Cottingham Road, Piasta, and I'm going to -- you have done a fine job of presenting the facts for the soccer complex. I'm going to present it from a grandparents' point of view. Our family would like to address the issue of the sale of the soccer complex. Our children and now grandchildren have been involved in soccer from a young age through high school. I am there twice a week to take our sixth-grade granddaughter for soccer practice and tournaments on the weekends. Our 11th-grade granddaughter is there for club and high school soccer. The soccer programs are strong and involve hundreds of Dubuque Community School District youth. These programs bring many families to Dubuque for games and tournaments. The high schools' cross-country teams are there as well. When local businesses are recruiting employees, their families are interested in sports for their children, and soccer is one of the most popular sports because it involves youth of all ages and abilities. I was wondering when you were there last to see the number of youth involved on a weekend? Just this past weekend, all fields were filled with teams playing the sport. Have you seen the number of names on the bricks surrounding the concession stand who were original donors to the complex? Also, the local businesses who each sponsor a field. It would be a big mistake to take away the complex from the schools and the community. Let's think of the youth, not the money. Thank you very much.
My name is Joe Delaney. I recently graduated from Dubuque Senior High School, and I wish to call your attention to a very pressing topic: inequity in funding for arts education in the Dubuque Community School District. Our students produce some outstanding work, but unfortunately, it seems as if some group's work is valued more than others. In fact, I recently attended the Iowa High School Musical Theater Awards to perform a medley from Seniors' Fall Production of Little Shop of Horrors, an honor that is only given to schools who earn the highest ensemble award of outstanding musical production. As such, this event serves as the equivalent of a state competition for the community of high school musical theater, allowing schools to promote their successes to the state. Now, from my conversations with district officials, it is my understanding that when a group such as ours qualifies for a state-level event such as this, the district would subsidize costs related to transportation rather than the individual school or the students themselves. But that wasn't the case for us this time. In fact, the district refused to cover transportation costs for students to attend, and Seniors' building fund had to be used to keep these costs from encroaching on the students themselves. In addition, myself and two other students qualified to compete in an extension of this event known as the Triple Threat Program, where we competed for one of two spots to represent the state at the National High School Musical Theater Awards in New York City. Unfortunately, again, the district did not provide us with any financial assistance to participate, and we were each obligated to drop multiple hundreds of dollars to attend. Other districts across the state, including Davenport Community Schools, have found such burdens to be inequitable and now provide funding for students to attend similar theater events, such as the Iowa Thespian Festival. Unfortunately, we do not, thereby limiting these opportunities to those of ample socioeconomic status. Let me be perfectly clear. This is nothing short of a major equity issue. Students should not have to turn down an educational opportunity simply because they do not possess the necessary funds. They shouldn't be forced to drop hundreds of dollars to compete for something their athletic counterparts regularly do on a subsidized basis. Members of the school board, I will leave you with this simple thought: Our students should not be treated as less than by praise or by checkbook simply because of which passion they decided to pursue. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve those items listed on the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Is there any item that a board member wishes to have pulled? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay. So, that puts us to the Facilities and Support Services Committee report from Ms. Whitman.
Okay. I will start with Ken Straka of the Straka Johnson Architects updated us on the facilities project at senior high school, Phase Two. He said things are going on time, budgets, and the cost is within budget right now. So, I move the Board of Education approve Change Order Number Three to Tricon Construction Group and the senior high Phase Two project in an increased amount of $59,704.04.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Change Order Number Three to Tricon Construction Group on the senior high school Phase Two project in the increased amount of $59,704.04. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Okay. Another facilities motion is I move the Board of Education approve the professional services agreement with Origin Design Company for survey, engineering, design, and construction-related services for various minor district improvements and projects.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the professional services agreement with Origin Design Company for survey, engineering, design, and construction-related services for various minor district improvement projects. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
My next two motions have to do with the sale of the property of the Fulton Elementary School and the sale of the soccer complex. Amy Hawkins has a few words to say before I read those motions.
Well, thanks, Lisa. As you know, we had this as a topic on our agenda, facilities, on Monday night, and the district hasn't decommissioned property in quite some time. So, we brought in our legal experts, Ed Henry and his team, and so he gave some different options to the board, and really, it was decided upon that we would go take these properties out to bid. And so, that bid process, the motion carries tonight, that will be posted on our website immediately following the meeting tonight, and then bidding will start at 8:00 a.m. tomorrow morning, and that bidding process will last 30 days. I hope I said that right, Ed. And then, at that time, the board will make some decisions. But we appreciate Ed's guidance on that piece, and we look forward to the transparent process that the board has put in place. So, thank you.
Okay. I'll start reading the motions. I move the Board of Education begin accepting sealed proposals for the sale and development of that certain real property, formerly the location of Fulton Elementary School at 2540 Central Avenue in Dubuque, Iowa, and sealed proposals to be accepted beginning at 8:00 a.m. on Tuesday, July 19th, and accepted until close of business at 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, August 18th. An interested buyer should submit their proposals in a sealed envelope to the board's legal counsel at Firsty Carew, Juergens &amp; Sudmeyer, PC, Attention Edward F. Henry, at 890 Main Street, Suite 200, in Dubuque, Iowa. And following the conclusion of the proposal acceptance period, the law firm of Firsty Carew, Juergens, Sudmeyer, PC will present all the proposals to the board, and if the board's discretion, any of the proposals are acceptable to the board, taking into consideration all factors deemed relevant to the board. One will be selected by the board to move forward, and a purchase agreement will then be negotiated pursuant to the terms of the accepted proposal. And no proposal will become binding on the Dubuque Community School District until such proposal is reduced to an offer to buy real estate and acceptance that is approved by the Board of Education by further resolution. And the Board of Education reserves the right to reject all bids if such rejection is deemed to be in the best interest of the district.
Second.
It's a big motion. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education begin accepting sealed proposals for the sale and development of that certain real property, formerly the location of Fulton Elementary School at 2540 Central Avenue in Dubuque, Iowa, and sealed proposals to be accepted beginning at 8:00 a.m. on Tuesday, July 19th, and accepted until close of business at 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, August 18th. An interested buyer should submit their proposal in a sealed envelope to the board's legal counsel at Firsty Carew, Juergens, and Sudmeyer, PC, Attention Edward F. Henry, 890 Main Street, Suite 200, Dubuque, Iowa, 52001. And following the conclusion of the proposal acceptance period, the law firm of Firsty Carew, Juergens, and Sudmeyer, PC will present all of the proposals to the board for review, and if, in the board's discretion, any of the proposals are acceptable to the board, taking into consideration all factors deemed relevant to the board, one will be selected by the board to move forward, and a purchase agreement will then be negotiated pursuant to the terms of the accepted proposal. And no proposal will become binding on the Dubuque Community School District until such proposal is reduced to an offer to buy real estate and acceptance that is approved by the Board of Education by further resolution. And the Board of Education reserves the right to reject all bids if such rejection is deemed to be in the best interest of the district. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to a little bit reaffirm what Amy mentioned about the process that we developed at our committee meeting, and I think that we should follow through with the process.
Thanks, Jim. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Okay. My next motion, this has to do with the Dubuque Soccer Complex. I move the Board of Education begin accepting sealed proposals for the sale and development of that certain real property, the location of the Dubuque Soccer Complex at 3355 John F. Kennedy Road in Dubuque, Iowa, and sealed proposals to be accepted beginning at 8:00 a.m. Tuesday, July 19th, and accepted until close of business at 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, August 18th. An interested buyer should submit their proposal in sealed envelope to the board's legal counsel at Firsty Carew, Juergens, and Sudmeyer, PC, Attention Edward F. Henry, at 890 Main Street, Suite 200, Dubuque, Iowa. And following the conclusion of the proposal acceptance period, the law firm of Firsty Carew, Juergens, and Sudmeyer, PC will present all of the proposals to the board for review, and if the board's discretion, any of the proposals are acceptable to the board, taking into consideration all factors deemed relevant to the board, one will be selected by the board to move forward and a purchase agreement will then be negotiated pursuant to the terms of the accepted proposal. And no proposal will become binding on the Dubuque Community School District until such proposal is reduced to an offer to buy real estate and acceptance that is approved by the Board of Education by further resolution, and the Board of Education reserves the right to reject all bids if such rejection is deemed to be in the best interest of the district.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education begin accepting sealed proposals for the sale and development of that certain real property, the location of the Dubuque Soccer Complex at 3355 John F. Kennedy Road in Dubuque, Iowa, and sealed proposals to be accepted beginning at 8:00 a.m. on Tuesday, July 19th, and accepted until close of business at 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, August 18th. An interested buyer should submit their proposal in a sealed envelope to the board's legal counsel at Firsty Carew, Juergens, and Sudmeyer, PC, Attention Edward F. Henry, 890 Main Street, Suite 200, Dubuque, Iowa, 52001. And following the conclusion of the proposal acceptance period, the law firm of Firsty Carew, Juergens, and Sudmeyer, PC will present all of the proposals to the board for review, and if, in the board's discretion, any of the proposals are acceptable to the board, taking into consideration all factors deemed relevant to the board, one will be selected by the board to move forward, and a purchase agreement will then be negotiated pursuant to the terms of the accepted proposal. And no proposal will become binding on the Dubuque Community School District until such proposal is reduced to an offer to buy real estate and acceptance that is approved by the Board of Education by further resolution, and the Board of Education reserves the right to reject all bids if such rejection is deemed to be in the best interest of the district. Is there any discussion?
Once again, I would just underscore what Mr. Prohaska said, that we considered many different ways, many different process nuances, and with Mr. Henry's advice, this seems to be a sound and rational way to proceed. So, I don't want the community to think tonight is our first consideration of it. We've worked with it in committee.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right. So, a few more motions?
Yeah. They're shorter, I promise. A little shorter.
I move the Board of Education adopt a resolution accepting endorsement that the district's insurance carrier will indemnify an employee required to give bond for faithful performance of duties required by law.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt a resolution accepting endorsement that the district's insurance carrier will indemnify an employee required to give bond for faithful performance of duties required by law. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
My next motion has to do with adult meal price increase. I think it's only a quarter or 20 cents.
Something like that.
Yeah. To $4.15 a meal. I move the Board of Education approve the revised adult meal price increase as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the revised adult meal price increases as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
And there is a document called the Facility Beliefs, so that was drafted, and we added some verbiage regarding the sale of properties for now and going forward. So, I move the Board of Education approve the Facility Beliefs as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the Facilities Beliefs as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
And my last motion, Kevin Kelleher. Do you have an update on the quarterly budget report?
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Hawkins. Just a couple things on the quarterly budget report I'd like to bring your attention to. Page 93 of your packet has the total general fund revenues for the past fiscal year, FY 2122. Just want you to know that there will be some adjustments to that. We call them accruals. We will be deducting from that number the revenue that came in in July and August that relates to the prior fiscal year, and we'll be adding in revenue that comes in this month and in August that relates to the 2122 fiscal year. So, that number will change from this number in the report. It'll probably go down a little bit because the accruals last year, I believe, will be higher than they are this year. That said, the amount we believe we'll end up with will still be higher than any number that we've projected to you or is in the budget amount. So, overall, the revenue, we believe, will be up for the general fund. Next thing is on page 96. If you look at the nutrition fund revenue, that is up substantially over prior years as well. Couple reasons for that. First of all, last year, the federal government allowed all students to eat free meals, breakfast and lunch, and they increased our reimbursement rate for both of those. So, with students being able to eat their meals free, we had an increase in participation So with students being able to eat their meals free, we had an increase in participation well over 10%. So those two factors really drove up our revenue. And in case you don't know, the federal government has not extended that offer to the next school year. So we go back to kind of the rules that were in place before COVID came out, where you'll have free, reduced, and full-pay lunches, which is kind of sad because I think that did benefit all families and all students. It was one piece of legislation that really helped everyone. Last thing I want to bring your attention to is the sales tax fund expenses on page 97 of your packet. You see that if you look at the budget balance, it's overspent by about $13 million. That is because it includes encumbrances for the senior project. We still have about $19 million left to spend on Phase Two of that, and those expenditures are included in that encumbrance amount. So really, if you subtracted it out, we would not be overspent in that area. Any other questions from any board members on the quarterly budget?
When would you anticipate that you'll have actual numbers for end of fiscal year?
Sure. We have to file our certified annual report with the Department of Ed by September 15th, so it'll be around mid-September when we have the, the results of the past fiscal year. Okay. Anything else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Now, I'll read the motion now. I move the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That's all I have. All right. Thank you so much. Moving to Ms. Bradley with the Ed Programs and Policy Committee report.
Thank you. We met on July 8th, and as always, our meeting is divided into two sections. One is the educational programs topics that come, come to the board committee. The other is policies that are up for regular review on a five-year cycle. So starting with the educational programs, we thank Mr. Maloney, Joe Maloney, for bringing us an update on the elementary summer school program. Happy to give you sort of the pearls from that. All students going into second grade were invited. Historically, until the pandemic and some concerns about learning loss, only select students were invited to summer school, and they met a qualifying score on a reading assessment. Now, since the pandemic and continuing this summer, all students going into second grade were, have been invited again, which we're pleased about. And 220 students would, have signed up for summer school and are attending, which is about 30% of those available district-wide. The summer academy is held at three sites, Audubon, Prescott, Table Mound, and those sites are the same sites as meal distribution occurs for students or people 18 and under, younger. They're able to go to those schools, and food serving is available for them. It also is included with those attending summer school. So our summer school students have a full morning that starts with breakfast, then it goes to literacy programming, thanks to Tammy Dear and some of her folks who have prepared wonderful lessons for them. We, we saw, see lots of great activities to help our children keep moving forward with reading and other literacy areas. And then they're able to finish the, the morning with lunch, and optional is to stay for the afternoon for enrichment programming. And we're pleased that quite a number of those attending the morning are also staying for the afternoon, which is great. Of those students who are attending summer school, about 50% ride an express school bus route to school. So we thank Mr. Bollebaugh and our bus drivers who make that shuttle service possible for our children to be able to get to those three, one of those three sites. So that's summer school. Next, at next meeting, we will hear about the secondary summer school. Mr. Burns will bring us that information at that time. So we moved on. The other thing that happened, and I'll be making a motion in a little bit, is that we, an annual part of the elementary science curriculum, which is based on science kits, very hands-on, active engagement program in science instruction for our elementary children, and that means those kits have to be refurbished every summer. A technical and tedious task. And so we have a, the board heard a proposal for a $70,000 contract to Keystone Area Education Agency, who partners with us in providing the renewal of those kits for our continued programming in the fall. I'll come back to a motion about that in a moment. Then we moved on to policy. We received, had time to review six policies: summer school, school-to-work education, minimal school day for high school students, academic student requirements, district-to-district open enrollment, and district-to-district open enrollment insufficient classroom space. Those motions, those were policy renewals, and modifications were approved in the consent agenda earlier in this meeting. So I'll come back now to our motion that results from our committee meeting, and I move that the Board of Education approve the professional service contract with Keystone Area Education Agency.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the professional service contract with Keystone AEA. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right. Thank you for that report.
Certainly.
That brings us to new business. Do you have any new business, new superintendent at the table at your first meeting?
Well, you know, I guess I'll just say, my first 11 days have been fabulous. It's been a great transition so far. The team, the district leadership team has been wonderful in the transition, very supportive. Obviously, Carrie Moss and Amy Nevens have been supporting me and telling me, no, you don't do that, or yes, you need to do this, or whatnot. So I appreciate that. And then the board has been wonderful. I appreciate our one-on-one meetings that we all have been able to have, and I hope we can continue that communication and move in the district forward. So thanks for your patience with me as we go through the transition, but really, it's been, it's been great. So thanks, and I'm excited for the new opportunity.
Welcome to the board.
And thank you for the little update that you sent us.
Yes.
That was very nice.
I'm glad you could see that.
Gave us a little quote and set up very nicely. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We appreciate that.
Thank you. Good to have you here.
Thank you.
Off to a strong start.
Yeah. Are there any board member administrative issues that were not on the agenda to discuss tonight?
I would just like to say thank you to all those that presented in open forum. The board cannot respond to any presentations during that open forum, but I want to thank you for coming forward with your ideas, your presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Prohaska. Nothing else? All right. Well, then, we are adjourned.